Yeah, I'm gonna say that, yeah.
Your showerman is on.
There she is. Look at her. Perfect. Morning, Alan.
Good morning, Alan.
Good morning.
You're muted, Alan.
She'll just send it to him yesterday.
Good job.
Jim says he's having a little tough time getting off. What's that?
He is not.
No, Mary has, Mary and Terry have removed themselves from the board of elections.
Thank you. They've announced their candidacy. And it's been our policy, once you announce your candidacy, you have to recuse yourself from all election. Thank you, just for the transparency.
Sure.
Absolutely. Thank you so well.
You guys good? Everybody good?
Yeah, just waiting on Jim, but I mean, we.
I'll give him a couple, let's give him a couple of minutes. I know that.
We have a forum now.
When you're at the Privilege of the Internet.
Yeah, and we, and we have service, think of those municipalities and neighborhoods in the city.
Don't. I think we're in the right, taking steps in the right direction.
I believe.
My parents turn their cell phone service at their house in my village.
So.
Depends where you stand in my house.
Can't get to their house.
Yeah.
Even outside, spotty at rest.
Yeah, I just had to go through cable. Then we went to. With AT&T, because they have what they call FirstNet, first responders.
I'm familiar.
Yeah, so I just had my ID card.
In fact, in fact, I think FirstNet would have been cheaper than the $26 spent on a very good system.
That's all. What do I know? But yeah, yeah, the first that is if your first responder in an emergency, if they start to lose their bandwidth, you know, Joe, two citizens, they get pushed off. We get saved. Our new radios, guess where they go through? Cell towers.
And they know, and if you're in a predicament, in a building, you're separated, they GPS locate you, right in that room.
Yeah.
Right in that room to the spot.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but unfortunately, Councilman Sharron is going to be very brief with.
Okay, we'll get it. Wait, we're just a second. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this special meeting order. If anybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I have. The United States of America. And to really, like, we just stand as one nation, under indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Right. One call, please.
Mr. Bale?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Sharron?
Here.
Mr. Wannarski? We got you on the table. Chairman Sharron?
Here. Okay, here in the public, since nobody really signed up, so it's.
I'd like to speak. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hang on one second.
Stay with us one moment, Freda.
So since somebody signed up, we're gonna open it up for three minutes. So Ms. Tupper, you have the floor for three minutes.
This is Freda Tupper. I live in Erie, and I am a judge of elections. During the primary last year, I had to move to a different election district to be a judge because I was on the ballot for Democratic Committee, and I was happy to do that. My understanding is it is customary for those who are candidates for election or reelection to not be on the election board. I understand that some of the members of the council slash election board have not yet officially declared themselves as candidates in this election. However, I hope that all members of the council have the highest integrity and do not participate in the election board if they are announced or intended candidates for office. And also, I hope that this time, this primary, that my friend who uses the the keypad touchpad and audio device at her district is actually able to be accommodated, to vote individually and privately. The last three times, that precinct was not able to accommodate her. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for three minutes? Yes, sir. State your name and best value in your.
Talarico, Harvard Road, City of Erie. I just want to piggyback on what Freda said. I know that Mr. Teller and Mrs. Freddy are not here today. That's because they are seeking reelection to their terms. There are two other members of the county council who are all, well, I don't know if they're seeking reelection or not, but if they are, they need to recuse themselves also. Now, unless, now, if you're not seeking reelection, that's fine, and you state so at this meeting and let us know just what your plans are. But if that's not the case, this is a bad idea. It may, it may not be legal, but it would be lawful and awful. Election 2023 is underway. Petitions are circulating. We're having this meeting for that very purpose because election 2 is underway. If it is your contention that there's nothing on this agenda that is pertinent to the election in the fall, then I would ask why we've been having this meeting. But it's important that the people, if you are indeed running for reelection, that you need to recuse yourself. Now, if you take the position that, well, I'm not formally, formally announced yet, so I should be able to participate, that's a distinction without a difference. Everything we decide at this meeting has some bearing on the election in the fall, so you need to refuse yourselves. We hear a lot of talk about election integrity these days, and election integrity is important. So I would ask that those who are planning on running for reelection, they can write thing and recruit, recuse themselves from anything that is voted upon in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for three minutes? Just state your name, your municipality, and your time will start.
Mr. Chairman, just to interrupt, Councilman Wannarski is on, unfortunately, having technical difficulties, but he's right here.
Hi, Jim.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to say a few words? Anybody else would like to say a few words? If not, we will move on. Review and discussion of board guidelines. I think that's what Mr. Talarico is discussing, is that we really don't have any set rules, per se, on the county level that states when you are a candidate. So the question is, when are you a candidate? That's what we're, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair. And although we don't have written policy, we certainly have precedents. Even in a minor role, as a role, as a candidate for committee, man, I had to recuse myself. And I did. And I would expect because of integrity, integrity matters, election integrity matters. All of us are integrity failure. And so any any thing that will call that into question. If we have the ability to not have that called into question. And it's not just my latest recuse. But it's been recusal after recusal, after recusal. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Jim, did you have any input on this? I don't want to forget the folks online.
No, I'm good so far on my end.
Okay, good. Charlie?
I'm good. You know, we, we had some brief discussion with our solicitor regarding this, and it seems like there has been a best practice in this situation. Again, the definition of when you're a candidate, I think we need to clearly define, and I don't disagree with, you know, Mr. Talarico, that, you know, there's an implied intent. I mean, probably at this point, I think everybody knows whether or not they're running or they're not running. So to me, it makes sense to come up with that, that line. Maybe we say, you know, is it when the first opportunity for petitions to be drawn, is it, you know, does it necessarily have to be the drawing up the petition? You know, does it have to be a formal announcement? But I think we do need to clearly define, you know, that aspect of as a group.
And, and I, and I want to piggyback on Councilman Bale's comments. Because, you know, there's the law, and then there's the spirit of the law. And everyone knows.
Would you mind speaking up for the folks in?
Yes, I said, I said, there's the law. And then there's the spirit of the law. The intent, and most reasonable prudent people, which is a standard that most of us have used throughout our lives, understand what it is. And again, just because it's sitting here from a reference of Black History Month, you know, some things are lawful under law and under the Constitution, but they're not right. Some things are lawful. At 450 years of lawful laws, it hasn't been right. And so I just would ask that we all do the right thing and clearly define, or live up to the spirit of the law, of which is intent. You're gonna run, you know you're running, then you should recuse yourself.
Thank you. We.
Oh, good. Councilman Sharron, she did have to step off, so she apologized. She was covering her shift, running the floor at.
So we had a meeting. Everybody was there. We actually asked the solicitor to help us define that and how to handle this. He says, from, from his perspective as our solicitor, there is no real rules on the Home Rule Charter that states when, where, why, and how as a candidate. I know AJ and I, we had a, we had an awful tough conversation about this last night. And when does somebody become a candidate? That's a, that's a great question. That's a million dollar question. Anybody can pull a petition at any time. That doesn't make them a candidate, in my perspective, in our conversation we had at our last meeting. Even if I go and say, and I announce that I'm running, okay, does that make, still make me legally a candidate? Really? Until those petitions are signed and notarized and turned into the election office, in my understanding of the rules, that's when you are a candidate. Even with that, there's still an out to come off the roster. Ms. Fernandez, what's the date on rescinding your candidacy?
Seven days after the last day to submit your petitions.
Right. The precedent is there that when are you a candidate? When can you stop being a candidate? So my interpretation, and I would like to have this talked and discussed about that, until you actually turn in a petition, it is accepted by a staff member, notarized officially as a representative, saying, yes, we, we have accepted your petitions, you sign that petition, correct? As we do an, do the notary work? That is when I think you are actually legally a candidate. Yes, sir.
The question of whether your candidate is valid or not. But where, the question at hand is, are you, when are you? Because, because we're, we're called to want to be bored than regular, the everyday Joe or citizen. We've been elected, raised our hands, said we swear, we serve with fidelity. And that means something. And so and so the question at hand for me is in whether anyone of the general public, when they're a candidate or not, the question that read for me at hand is where does your integrity lie? As a member of the Board of Elections, when are you, when should you cease to participate in election board material? You know that you, again, the spirit of the law, you have an inkling that you want to run. I think that we should be held to a higher standard. I think that we've been very blessed to have an election office that has upheld that standard. And throughout all the offices in the county, some may differ. But I subscribe to the belief that this office, this body, this board, above all others, should be above reproach. It should exemplify leadership and integrity at its highest standard. Particularly in today's discussion, will we find ourselves as a nation, politically and local? We should remove all manner of doubt.
Gotcha.
And I know that was our understanding, Mr. Chairman, that if I may, with, with our solicitor to be here presently, I thought he was on his way, I was hoping, but unfortunately, he has yet to arrive. And as you mentioned, we had a discussion, there were some emails that went back and forth. Councilwoman Sharron had asked me, as I mentioned, the one email to reach out to the Department of State. And as the solicitor had said, it is the solicitor's, you know, final interpretation, not the Department of State. But I do have that email. If you'd like me to read that, what they sent to us when I asked the question. So I spoke to Jonathan Marks. He, as we all know, he's the Deputy Secretary of the Department of State. And I want, you know, clarification on, you know, the guidance of when, when a member of the Board of Elections should step down. And he said, it depends on when their membership on the board becomes a clear conflict. Based on what I've heard from other counties over the years, the latest they would have to step down is when they file petitions. At that point, they are candidates under even the tightest definition of the term, and making a decision on whether to accept or reject their own petition would create a clear conflict. Some counties step away earlier than that, but the, you know, exactly, it varies from county to county, depending on how rigid their solicitor's reading of the law is. So following what Tom said, again, is the interpretation of the solicitor.
Right, so even the Secretary of State, correct?
Deputy Secretary.
Sorry. It's stating until you turn in your petitions, are you a candidate? And our solicitor basically.
That's clearly not what he stated.
Depending.
He said, he stated that, but he also stated additionally. So I think to simplify it, to say that that's what he stated definitively would be inaccurate. I think he stated that that's one of the ways. But others stepped away sooner.
Sooner.
Also indicated.
It depends on when their membership on the board becomes a clear conflict. Again, some counties step down right away, some counties step down when they file petitions. It does vary, is what he is saying. But again, depends on the solicitor's reading of the law.
And again, I hate to paraphrase, because he's not here to speak his words, but he basically said, it's up to the board.
He can say that. And then the email, then, as we discussed previously, guidance I received was, was different. And that's why I wanted to declare what a candidate is, when is candidacy declared? Is that when the petition is pulled? Is that when the petition is circulated? Is that when the petition is filed? Making sure we had clear, you know, guidance on, on that. And again, I apologize. We know I am not the solicitor, but we did have a discussion last night, and I was under the impression he was on his way here.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, even from state is saying basically what I just said, because that's where I kind of got their drift. And of course, you know, what was the term you used, clear conflict? We haven't had any clear conflicts. There is no conflict. We haven't voted on anything. The only thing we're voting on today is, next up is for the nomination for election board chair. So, I mean, I have no problem finding guidance from our solicitor and from the state on this issue about turning in the petitions. I mean, that's, that's my drift. I mean, Charlie, it's that's a guidance higher from, from what we're saying.
I think as long as it's set in stone, that we say that that is the day. And, you know, if there is the, I mean, we can't even have the appearance of impropriety. You don't want somebody that's going to know that they're running, influencing, obviously, well, from either side, it doesn't matter which side, but influencing board decisions, election board decisions, knowing that they're gonna have a part in the process.
I agree.
You know, a clear defining of, you know, when you file your petition, I'm, I'm fine with, so that we have a distinct line. And we can discuss issues of recusal, you know, when items come up for the election board that, no. We think they're in issue with clarity or whatever. So I'm fine with using that as a hard line in the sand.
You're next.
Okay.
Your opinion matters.
I have one question. If a candidate running for county council was to submit a petition, and I brought it to the board, if there was an issue on it, and I brought it to the board asking, do we accept this petition? If it was for a district that one of the board members currently sat on, would they be able to, to vote as if we accept that petition or not? Does that make sense? Does.
Right. But then again, one, until those, when those petitions are submitted, at that point, we're done. So they're not on the board anyway. So their opinion would be mute.
I, I mean, if I had a petition, a set of petitions, and I had a question for the board, can we accept this petition or not? This is for a county council candidate. Would a sitting council member be able to vote on if we accept that petition?
A sitting Board of Elections member.
A sitting Board of Elections member, I'm sorry, yes.
Because that question could come up. If, if that petition was turned in today, because everyone can turn in starting on February 14th, and that's a, it's a valid question.
Yeah, that, that's my only question.
Gotcha.
I would say no, because it has direct bearing on, I mean, whether it's that individual that may or may not plan on running, or someone that may or may not be running against them. So they would have a direct effect.
So, yeah.
I, I think, no, that's a point for refusal, and.
And I agree.
Well, I'll just say that, if I may. Well, clearly, because we're all adults here. Issue at hand is, any of us are running or not, at this point in time for us to be able to vote in today's agenda. And I just think that it's a horrible look if you know that you're intending to run. And in light of all of this conversation, to not recuse yourself. I think it looks horrible for us as a county, as a board. And I think if anyone fits that criteria and go forward, and they do become a candidate, then I think it becomes even more than awful. And I understand the business at hand, what we have to do. See, we'll need to put a stop. This seems like a bigger decision than this. I'm uncomfortable moving forward. Currently, we have a coram. I guess Jim's still on the line. But I'm not above suspending this meeting, or asking that it be suspended until we have a definitive, because even if we're going to come up with policy, I don't think it's by us to establish policy without our citizens.
Well, unfortunately, he made a decision not to be here.
I'm not gonna say the decision, I'm gonna say he's not here.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I just had a meeting earlier, but one of my colleagues weren't there, and it wasn't a decision. Something happened. So I'm not gonna purpose anybody's intention. Clearly, he's not here. Clearly, he's our solicitor. Clearly, we have a question. Clearly, we're talking about policy. Clearly, we're talking about establishing policy going forward. Why would you not do that with, with your solicitor?
With all due respect, Don, right, we had this conversation with our solicitor when he was here, but he stated very clearly, if I'm wrong, correct me. It's up to council.
He did state that during that conversation, but as discussed with Councilman Bale, that was opposite of what he had previously advised me, and that was opposite of what we had discussed in the email, on the email over the weekend, when he specified that. So that is what we wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. And that's what I was asking for, a clear definition of the word candidate, when I sent that email to the solicitor and deputy solicitor. I want to make sure we have that understanding, because again, a candidate can be someone who fools a petition. Thanks to Tanya, petitions are readily available on our website, where someone can pull a petition, and we don't even know. They can be circulating right now. We have no idea. So is that a candidate? Is a candidate the person that turns in the petition and actually files it? So which one is it? And that was the definition we needed.
Right. Well, I'm not adverse to a council establishing policy, not saying that at all. I'm saying, I don't think we have to do it right now, on the brink of, while we have petitions out, and we waited this long. I think that this would be right, right, and prudent to continue with past practices. And after this election, let's give with our solicitor, establish a policy. Because this just don't feel right.
Yes, Ms. Peggy.
We got our solicitor on Zoom.
Oh, hi, Tom. It's like Beetlejuice. We speak and then you appear.
We need him to be.
Earl's calling Tom. Come in, Tom.
Ground control, that's a great song. Yeah.
He's going.
That's the connection to audio.
Yeah, sometimes it takes a second. Same, same, same. Maybe the same thing that Jim was experiencing. Technology, it's great.
Solicitor Talarico, can you hear us? There we go.
Julie, I believe my problem was I only have a five-digit passcode.
Okay. Would you like a six-digit passcode to log in? Are you okay this way?
Or you want us to second that motion?
Councilman Martin would like to know if you'd like to second the motion.
They'll award you a six-digit.
So award you a six-digit per council. Jill was calling him to reach out to see if she could get in line.
I guess part of the discussion too is what issues does it create for your office? What, what issues do you face right now by us not having alignment, not having us be able to, to vote, not having a clear definition? We can't, you know, what's, what's the timeline? What's sensitive for you right now that needs to be handled?
That's just a challenge, challenge that we were talking for, and for, for us, it's the, you know, the integrity of the office. I don't want any of our, you know, you know, clerks, any of our members of our team to be put in a predicament where it's like, wait a minute, because he's, he's your boss, he's your boss, you did this, you did that. That's the biggest concern. And Tanya, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we know I'm overprotective of our team, and for a lot they've been through in this challenging environment that we're in, I just don't want them to face, you know, some type of questioning that, that is inappropriate, in my opinion. And, and we always joke about the, the see-through office, and, and that's where I'm always like, hey, let's not go over there, because I don't want it to look like we're doing something we should not be doing at any check. Tanya, did I, did I, add that all up together? Is there something I'm missing?
Yeah, I think you, I think that's a perfect.
So right now, you believe it's only the appearance of an integrity issue, there's no business, per se, that needs to be conducted, that the board is.
At the moment.
Right.
But there could be when a petition is turned in.
I'm just saying, but right now, there's no, no business.
At the moment, but that could change even this afternoon. And Councilman, my biggest thing is if you had to obtain 250 signatures, that would be down the road. We could have a candidate file this afternoon, since we only need 10 signatures. And Councilman, my biggest thing is if you had to obtain two hundred and fifty signatures, that would be down the road, we could have a candidate file this afternoon, since we only need ten signatures, you know, to be able to be a candidate on the ballot for county council.
Technically, on the, on the fourth, what, fourth, seventh?
Seventh.
You could draw one at eight o'clock in the morning, have it turned in by noon for ten seconds.
All the turn in by four o'clock, absolutely, anything, anything's possible, but with Tanya's, you know, hesitation comes down to the fact that anyone could file at any moment, someone could be filing right now, while we're here in this room. And, and we don't know, and that, that's just the only thing, if there is a challenge that needs to come before the board, that is the, the area of concern.
Yeah, I just think that if we have an opportunity to act, and be, not just an appearance, but in action, be above a reproach for that office, then we should. That's like a layer.
Was there any cause for concern between the people that are still here for a realignment of the elections board? Does that pose a problem to vote on realignment, so that we, we can conduct business? Mr. Rennie, I mean, does that have an impact on the election by voting for the realignment?
I think that that would be a question about the policy, because if you can vote for real life, that would be, you vote three.
Let's see if we can ask the solicitor that, because, is he phoning in now?
Yes, I can't get noise out of my computer.
Tom, can you hear us?
Let me, can you hook me up?
Oh, he's talking. I don't think he's here.
I'll just call him.
All right.
Hi, Tom, we can hear you.
Better not be talking about me.
Okay.
But he said he's having issues, you know, and actually.
Yeah.
What's going on or.
All right, so how about we have him call my, my cell phone, and we'll, we'll try that route, and at this point, have him call cell phone, and we'll try that, thank you.
A can on the string.
It's a long string.
Come to your cell phone.
I don't know where Tom lives, but I imagine it's across the street.
I started to call.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, no. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Wannarski, are you still with us?
Yeah, so I unmuted.
At least we get to look at his pretty face.
Is that bad, Jim? She's like.
She's cutting it stuff, she was the blood blank, and then had to come here, so trust me. Thank you.
I can give blood again now, they don't, they don't care about that mad cow no more.
We couldn't donate blood.
I couldn't, because mad cow disease.
We were in a theater operation where there was mad cow disease, so for a really very long time, we could not donate blood. And I told my son, I said, I'm telling you, I tried to warn you, mad cow disease, and I have a piece of paper, it says so right here. But now they, they've allowed us to start donating blood again.
After what, twenty years?
Yeah, twenty some years. They want to pay us this bill.
Wow, okay, you're with me, one moment. All right, we have Solicitor Talarico on the phone, and I'm gonna actually move to you, Councilman Bale, so you can ask your question.
Hi, Tom.
First, let me apologize, I thought the meeting was at eleven thirty. Secondly, when I tried to access, you know, I hunted an update. And I didn't quite get there, but I'm sorry. Hello, everybody, any questions?
Yes, it's Charlie, Tom, I, my question was, you know, is voting to realign today so that we can conduct business, is there, is there an issue? With, you know, we're discussing the definition of candidate, and I know we had, we talked about it in our meeting, and, you know, there was past practice, and we talked about. The date of filing a petition. But is there, is there an issue with today with us voting to realign? Do you see that as any type of integrity issue moving down the, the road with the Board of Elections?
As composed today, as the composition today.
Yes.
Well, you know, traditionally, I mean, it hasn't, you've looked at the rule and the definition of candidacy.
We're, we've talked about it, but I don't know that we still have it clearly defined.
Right, yeah, well, in the rules, and I'll read for you, under the Administrative Code, Board of Election Rules, it provides a definition of candidacy. And I'll read that to you.
Sure.
The, the term candidacy, as defined in the election code. Shall mean members of county council, or any individual who seeks nomination or election to public office. Whether or not the individual is nominated or elected. They are deemed to be the candidate if they have received a contribution, made an expenditure, or given consent for another person. Or committee to receive a contribution or make an expenditure. For the purpose of influencing his or her nomination or election. That office. Or has taken the act necessary under the laws of the Commonwealth to qualify himself for nomination or election that office. So, the first part A is pretty general, and that applies to reach out to anybody, any, any member of the election board. Who at some point prior to the election has either set up a committee, or even not has set up a committee. But is receiving money or spending money with the intention of launching his election, so engaged in activities. That is intended to contribute to your election down the road, yet announcing or declaring yourself candidate. Now, that's pretty hard for the election board, or, you know, to monitor. So it is a pretty difficult standard, you have to rely on the individual who has taken steps for their candidacy. Deciding on his or her own to say, okay, I, I think I'm connected. I'm too close to the election board as a member, to continue participating in the election board business, now that I have taken steps. Accepted contributions, made expenditures, or done any other act of furtherance of the campaign. The second issue is, for the second possibility, is taking other steps, more, more public and active, such as like taking, now they take for candidacy. So. That is pretty, you know, it, it's pretty vague, it's not, not, not necessarily vague, but it's hard to work with under the circumstances. So traditionally. What boards of elections have done in the past, including last year. Was use the date of filing, the first date of filing for an application, which would have been February fourteenth this year. In this way, you could forget about trying to monitor, or trying to find out whether a member of the election board has taken steps to do that, or. Or, or anybody, things like that. The bottom line is, the rule, the purpose of the rule, obviously, is to make the election board. From demonstrating to the public that it may, that it may be, that a member might be politically motivated, and that the election board, in fact, is also politically motivated. So that's the last thing any election board would want, is for the public to think that any one of its members. Have a, have one up on any other candidate, simply because they're on the board and act while at the same time being active. Now, that rule could change, I mean, that, that is the rule, if, if the board wants to change that rule, tighten it up, with different language. Of course, the board could do that, there's no state rule on this, this is a local rule, that the board came up with many years ago. And if it needs to be tailored, or tightened, or broadened, you have that as your power to do that.
And with that being said, then we can no longer rely, if we're going to change that policy, do we lose Mr. Scatella and Mrs. Rennie? Because they have declared their candidacy.
Well, simply as a matter of board policy, they should not be involved, no, I mean, I don't want to give the public perception that there are people running for candidate, or we don't. Or doesn't want to give the public the perception that its members are running for office and doing election board business at the same time.
Right. And even. With that, considering realignment, we would feel the same way.
Yes.
So going forward, probably a best practice is to set a date for realignment around the petition process, so that we can handle these matters before it becomes an issue. Would make sense.
Well, yes, I think that, you know, policy changes could include, you know, to be done or made by a, a majority of the entire board.
Okay, I just, to me, and does that make sense?
Yeah, but traditionally, we do the realignment in January, we have an election board meeting, in, in, in the same way that we realigned.
But we did.
The council, but we didn't this year, whatever reason, and so that kind of just compiled. Or tightened up, shortened the time frame. And so again, my recommendation, or my suggestion, or to my opinion, this is one. Is that we continue with past practices until we can convene the full body of the board and make the decision to, or tighten, and in the interim. In the interim, we can have, if it be the, the. If it be the wish of the board, we could start, have our solicitor start to tighten that language, or broaden that language, or however, whatever the board is. But I don't think that that's it, making that decision, even, I think that you, you would want the full. Comp.
Well, when we, we organized in January, I actually did approach. And asked if she would like to be, I would like to be on their same position, as you noticed, I didn't change anybody.
No, you didn't.
Everybody stayed exactly where they were, because that way, my theory is, but ain't broken, don't fix it. And I asked her, do you want this? She said, yes, for now.
I think at that point, when she, even though she agreed to, you should reorganize, that's hindsight, and we learn.
Right.
So, but the, the, you all heard me state, and I feel the same way about the HRC. There's like two things that you guys should be above reproach, it doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're on.
Yes, sir.
The. I would agree with Andre with respect to that specific issue. But of course, the board can conduct as a quorum, but free, any other election board business without the other four.
Gotcha. Yeah, because I know, Ms. Slomsky did read something from the state that gives, gave a little more definition to a candidate. Are you aware of what Slomsky was referring to? I believe that was an email.
I, I didn't hear that, Tom.
She read an email from the Deputy Secretary of the State, Mark Orloff, that was basically reiterating what you said, and it kicked it back to the count, to the Board of Elections.
The solicitor's reading of the law.
And also talked about clear, you know, clear conflict, and also when petitions were returned, also. And that's, I mean, that's how I feel, once those petitions are returned, they're notarized, they're stamped, sealed, delivered. To me, that's why I feel someone's truly a candidate, because right now, it's all hot air, there's a lot of posturing from everybody. That they're, they're gonna run for this, they're gonna run for that, they're gonna run for this, they're gonna run for that, and they don't. So we get, we, we cause a lot of havoc and chaos for hypothetical would have, could have, and should haves. So, I mean, I mean, Andre, you know, it's.
I mean, that's.
You had great points, I get it.
Just keeping what, what the solicitor said, because your points are great, and well-taken and valid. That's why we've elected to do it on the, in past practices, the date that petitions are eligible to be taken out, to remove all of that extra. Nerdity, or, you know, and that was because everything else was so vague. But that was a definitive date. That's only my point, that's.
Tom, well, I mean, we can take Andre's suggestion, the review and discussion of board guidelines, we can, we can table that, and, and we can move on to nomination, elections of board chairs.
I'm not going to, I'm going to listen to our solicitor, he just told us that that included, I mean, that was Charles' question, right? And he just told us. That that included this, so why would I vote on that? Why would I, why would we continue? I mean, that's the one definitive, that answer was very clear, definitive.
Just trying to find a resolve. We can, we can sit here all day and got this back and forth.
Well, the resolve is to, is to, to resolve, I would, I would recommend that not, we've gone this far without reorganizing the meeting. And I would recommend, if we, if we have to continue with this business, then I would ask that anyone who intends to be a candidate recuse themselves. If we insist on going along with the agenda. Anyone with, who intends. As of, what was it, tenth of February? The date of petition, well, it was the fourteenth of February, anyone who intends to run. Should recuse themselves, I mean, we can go ahead with the business, or we should not go on. And we should call another special meeting.
Are you gonna make a motion to?
I move that this meeting be suspended until, until the board be composed of board members who are not seeking election.
Second?
Probably will.
Jim, did you hear that?
I, I did, yes. Are the only three that are participating is, is Jim Wannarski?
He's, he's on, he's on the line.
Okay, so you have four.
Technically, yes.
Is that correct?
Correct, Ellen and myself.
Ellen's no longer.
Well, I guess, I, I guess I would say this, that if you have four members. The first thing you should do, and assuming that, um. The first thing you should do is nominate a chairman, get that out of the way.
Well, that was kind of my point, but Andre made a motion to stop the meeting, and it never got a second, so his motion failed, and he just decided to walk out of the meeting. Freda, this is not a two-way conversation.
Problem, because. Well, I, I mean, you still have, you still have a core, you still have three. So if, if the existing board, if the board as it exists now wants to appoint a chairman, like.
Can you hear that, Jim?
Yes, I can.
Okay, just want to make sure you heard all of that.
And Mr. Chairman, if we could please go back to the motion on the floor, and I believe Solicitor Talarico heard that Mr. Wannarski was attempting to speak. Mr. Wannarski, were you attempting to say something in response to the motion that was on the floor?
No, I, I wasn't ready to second that motion, no.
Thank you, just want to make sure we had that clear.
Okay, so we had a motion, we didn't get a second, so the motion fails, so then, per Tom's input, that we need to nominate a, a board chair. I will open up the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Charlie Bale as chair.
Duly noted, I will second that, I have a first and a second, I need a roll call, vote.
Are you able to second the motion as the acting chair?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I, I believe that you only need two votes.
Okay, okay, then we have one, okay, we have a first, right? Okay. Okay, then we have one in, okay, we have a first, right?
I would pick myself on the vote.
Okay, we have a.
After vote. For, if you recuse yourself, you'll still have a majority voting for Phil.
Okay, so as, as the Talarico just stated, we have a first and a second. That's vote one and two. So we have a chairman.
Is that what you stated, Mr. Solicitor?
I'm sorry?
Is that what you stated? So we have a vote one and two, so.
We have, we have a, we have a, 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 a motion and a second.
Okay.
To nominate Mr. Bale. And now there's a vote. I suggest that Mr. Gang recuse himself on vote.
Okay, roll call vote?
Okay, so.
Andre walked out of the, Andre walked out of the meeting.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
So be it. Motion carried. Nomination for vice chair, anybody?
Well, I'll return the favor and I would nominate Mr. Winarski.
Duly noted. Do I have a second?
Can I second that, then? Can I second that, or do you second that?
No, you can second it. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. Next, comments from the new board chair and vice chair. Pleasure, sir.
I'll keep it brief. You know, this is my first year on council. I've, obviously, there's been a steep learning curve and that includes, includes the election process. I do believe that Erie County does a great job with elections. We're going to make sure that we continue to strive for that high standard. I've already worked with Julie and Tanya. I don't think there's any issues there, hopefully not. I'll do my best to, you know, continue to learn the process and, you know, move us forward in a positive direction. That's what we can do. And we're going to look at some of these things. I mean, to me, this already sets up for if we're going to review the process, you know, maybe we need to back up and we, we need to look at when we do our reorganization as a council, that maybe the elections board, you know, we could say that that's the time when somebody becomes a candidate, you know, whatever. I think we could tighten that up a little bit and so we don't have these problems going forward. We want the process to be as smooth as possible, as transparent as possible and, you know. That's where I'm at. Mr. Vice Chair, do you have any comments?
I'll echo your comments, Mr. Chair, and have a good year.
Outstanding. Number eight, question, comments from the board. Obviously, we've already done that one. I'll have a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
You guys, everybody.
Do.